United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First point of business is reorganization. Make a motion to nominate Liz for chair. Second. Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so do we have to do all of them?
Now you're the chairman, you're in charge of the meetings.
Okay, here we go. So we need to reorganize everything, right, including the liaisons to all the committees?
Mm-hmm. Put a vice chair and a clerk.
Oh, and a vice chair and a clerk. So. I was, oh, who's the vice chair? Ed was the vice chair?
Mm-hmm.
Just to continue to be the vice chair.
The board wants that.
Make a motion to make Mr. Carley the vice chair.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the clerk?
Make a motion to make John Martin the clerk.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then the boards, and we have a small list here, because I remember last year there was a list, but we couldn't seem to find it, who the liaisons were to each of the boards. I was the liaison to the alminers, and I guess that can, that can stay. And who was the liaison to the community preservation commission? Anybody?
I can be that.
That means you're a member.
Okay.
And finance committee? I don't know who that was.
What about John? They're all women.
It's also gonna be John, I mean, he's just-
Right.
John or me, I don't care.
And the Norris, the Norris School Committee was David.
I thought you did that.
I went to the meetings, but I was not officially the liaison.
You mind being a liaison?
I don't mind, as long as there's no, there's no, we didn't do it because there was, someone thought there could be a conflict. But my budget doesn't come out of their budget, so there's no actual financial conflict. And the zoning board of appeals? Anybody?
Do we, we only filled in there if there was a need or shortage.
Yeah, we were, we, because sometimes, well, back in the day, the ZBA was short, so we'd have to go over and help. You know, for technical reasons, probably should have Ed just as a liaison if there's an issue. Ed doesn't have to attend the meetings, but if they needed to contact somebody, they could contact Ed.
That's fine.
And the public safety complex is Jackie. Are there any other boards that we're missing?
Policy procedures.
The who?
Policy procedures.
That's me.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else I'm missing, that you know you're a part of and I didn't say?
Yeah, I'm, I'm on the CPC, I'm supposed to, I am the liaison for the, the junior's group.
The community preservation commission?
Yes.
So David, you don't have to do that.
That's what I'm doing.
Okay, that's fine.
We have the school still, right? You got nothing?
Why don't you take the alminers?
Sure.
Is there anything I'm missing? No?
Something will come up as we go along.
So the next part of the meeting is a joint meeting with finance committee and town accountant Vicky Morrow to talk about year-end transfers.
Hi.
Hi.
So as you know, the department revenue gives you just a small window of time to do transfers between budget lines within departments for your budget, between two months before the year end, which would be April 30th to July 15th. Currently, I have a few line items that we need to move money into so that we can actually pay bills we have, because you can't pay bills if there's no money left in the account. So, I, did you guys get the email of my sheet? Okay.
I did, but maybe it's in here.
Oh. So basically, what I'm proposing to do for this first round, and that's why I labeled this number one. Did you guys get it? Yes, okay, and I haven't read it on that, so, okay. Okay. To take money from administrative assistant wages, which we aren't going to use, because Art is so basic, we volunteer to help Heather in every capacity that he possibly can. And the other piece would be to take money from the town administrator's salary, because we know Heather won't use all of those funds till the end of the year. It still leaves a little bit of money left in the town administrator's salary line for future transfers between now and July 15th. Currently, we have a legal bill, that's $23,196.43, and it is from, it's only for services through February. I have another one for $12,000 that we need to wait to pay in order to transfer money from some other under budgeted line, but I wanted to get this one out first. So I'm proposing to transfer that amount of money into legal expenses to pay for this legal bill. I'm also proposing to transfer $1,000 into select, selecting expenses, because I have bills for, that are past due from higher rate that we need to pay, and-
Higher rate, that's the screening agency?
The, yeah, the screening committee, the people that did the screenings. And then one to the Mass Municipal Association, for $105, that was for the town administrator posting, and this was from back in October. So, and, so I'm proposing to move money in there to pay for these, plus there's already a mega defense in the, so I have expenses-
Hundred and six dollars.
Hundred and six dollars.
The to, so the total, exact total is a thousand dollars?
No, I just moved the thousand dollars because I know there's gonna be other postings that we have for other positions.
Will that thousand dollars cover those other questions?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay.
And then the gas and electric for Town Hall, which is 8 East Street for the, where the police department is, this is just an estimate based on previous history of bills that we have for gas and electric bills. You know, currently I have an electric bill that's 1332 bucks.
Vicky, what does that compare to this time last year?
I don't know. They're, they're very high this year compared to last year.
So why is that? Because the upstairs is closed, then we go over there and check-
And the budget was much less than last year.
So I'm curious what's going on with the unused portion. Is the heat on up there inappropriately, or?
Well, I believe the heat's on in there, minimum fifty degrees.
Do we chart on that? Because it's electric heat in the old big room.
The old big room, but there's still, uh-
There's not pipes in there.
Well, we get, we have a gas bill for HGE also.
What's that?
We have an HGE bill and an electric bill.
Right. That, that seven thousand covers both of them?
And future bills, because this bill from HG, I mean, from, from Western Mass Electric is only through March 25th, so you still have April, May, and June. The same thing with HG.
Can I ask?
Yes.
I remember we looked at those bills to begin, did by any chance some of this building get paid from that account?
No.
You sure?
Yes.
Okay.
And then I have a HG bill here, which is only through March, and this one is for 987 bucks, so you're still gonna have April, May, and June to pay for those two pieces. It, so part of it is the electric and the gas bills were a lot higher, most of the gas bills were a lot higher this year, I think because it was a little on cold for winter and lasted a while longer, but the budget for this year was, was definitely in deficit to start with.
Okay.
You know, you're talking ten grand versus we budgeted in fifteen last year, and we spent thirteen last year, so I'm not quite sure why we budgeted ten this year, so that's-
How, how is this building doing?
This building has money left in there, a couple thousand dollars that should cover, should cover the bills that are for this building.
I see.
This is a comment, the building is closed Friday, right? So Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We've had occasion to, for committee meetings, meet in this building on Saturdays, and every time we come in here on Saturday, it's, it's seventy-two degrees, it's like no one turns the thermostat down for the three days.
No thermostat on.
And, and, and actually, it's so hot in here, we have to open windows. So I don't, in terms of saving energy-
Well, we have a system supposedly that's supposed to kick down on, on Friday. Only hit on during the hours that this building is occupied. It kicks down to a, like sixty-two, sixty-three, which is saying it's much hotter than that.
That would be, that would work.
That's something that, I mean, we have an agency that comes in and monitors those, and they can be called to, and, and, you know, we're here, you see it, when I question it.
Turn your air conditioning a little slower, because this room is an empty building.
Well, we pay extra money to just have this whole computer system to save money, because one of the things we wanted to build in this place was, that one of the reasons to go forward to rehab, we were spending, what, fifty thousand a year maintenance costs on this one?
This building?
On this building, but it was unused. But it was, it was a summer money that we were using, that we wanted to make sure this was as efficient as possible. So you'll see the thermostats in every room, and they're, this is supposed to be able to tie in to do what you're saying.
I have come in on Fridays, I have been in here, plus colder in my office, it's getting to like sixteen, or thirty. You know, I mean, I'm on Saturday, I have my thermostat, but I have been in here on Fridays when the heat was not as warm as it should be.
Because we only use, and they, they use the windows, I don't know.
See, what the problem is, is we have to set all, everything from main control and set by sections. So the whole building is set up into several different quadrants, including the council on aging, who uses their, their room over there more often than just four days a week, it's five to seven days. This room itself has its own quadrant as well. The problem is, though, people use this room on Fridays and Saturdays as well, people come in for meetings on both days. So you have two options, you can either set a regulated time for the heat to kick in, assuming that, okay, maybe that's a good time that people will come in, or I have to set up every single week, well, is anyone supposed to be planning to use that room or not? So the question is, at what point does it become time efficient for me to sit with the computer every week and actually set up schedules with folks to say, oh man, it's a last minute meeting, Vicky's gonna have that last minute meeting in the room, let me rearrange the schedule for the heat?
I understand what you're saying is, but it wasn't set up that would be more, more time consuming for you. It should have been set up that, on average, on Saturdays, this building's not open, it should be at sixty-two. We're talking, and just because there's a meeting coming in, you shouldn't have to run down, kick it up a couple degrees, they can wear sweaters that particular day, this is a Saturday. But I think we should check with SNE and verify that it is functioning properly. We pay four, five thousand dollars a year to have these monitors controlled, and it's remote monitoring, and they can pull up the computer right from their office, and we can pull it up here too. But I would give them a call, you know.
I don't know what happens next door, but these, those are for, for next door. You know, the bills here were also very high, twenty-two hundred dollars, one hundred bucks a key. The library is going through the same thing with their heat, they had bills that were two thousand dollars.
It was, it was an exception, clearly. Well, the other thing too is, these are more efficient boilers over here than the other ones. Those are, those boilers are thirty years old.
Yeah.
They're not efficient, and we've been told by numerous people, they're, they're very, very ineffective in, in heating that building. The other thing too is that building leaks like a sieve. You know, you fix one, you have another problem. So hopefully, when we have a new complex, it'll resolve some of these things, because of the age of the building and the problems with the building itself, it's gonna cost us a lot of money to heat that building when it gets real cold.
So the seven thousand dollars I estimated for the gas and electric, you know, is that if we don't have seven thousand dollars for the next three months for both utilities, that just falls back in the pre-match, so even if I overestimate it, I didn't, I didn't want to have to come back and say, oh, well, let's do this account again. The next account is power and value planning. One of the bills that came in was fifty dollars and eighty cents over, and conservation commission, the same thing, they had a bill that, that got paid that made that cap a little bit negative. And then the other one currently is the Town Hall building expenses are next door, I haven't been able to charge them for trash pickup or anything, because there was no money left in that particular account. Again, one was a little under budget for this year.
I mean, originally, those were all budget, yeah, and they just reduced to all budget?
It was not, correct. And so I was gonna transfer, wanted to transfer money in there to pay for those trash pickup, so, and that should be for the next two quarters, this quarter through March, and then the last quarter. So if there's anything else that they need to get repaired over there, that would be a different situation altogether.
How much are you leaving town administrators out?
I think?
If you have, what are the costs you're gonna take out of each line, I was just curious?
I think there was like eleven thousand and some change to play with, so I only took out nine.
Any assistant wages?
Any assistant, that's everything.
That's everything, okay.
Correct.
So there's about two thousand dollars left?
For town?
In the town administrator's salary line?
Yeah.
Are we expected to transfer one later?
To, from other, yes.
From other places?
From other places.
But not this one?
But not. You might transfer heat from the town administrator's, but there's not gonna be nothing left in the administrative assistant wages. So I don't know what other accounts won't be used out to pay for this other legal bill, which is only for March, and then you have April, May, and June, so we'll have to cross that.
We have an ongoing issue with you, Mel?
Yes.
How is the reserve fund at this point?
There's like thirty-two hundred dollars off tonight, thirty-four hundred dollars off tonight.
And that was originally, what, thirty-five?
Thirty-four, thirty-five.
Do you want to take a vote on this?
Yeah, they both do.
I make a motion to approve the transfers as recommended by the town count. Second.
Any other discussion?
All in favor? Aye.
You guys make your own motions?
We move to approve the transfers as proposed by the town accountant. Second. All in favor? All aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Liz. See if you can find another victim, another volunteer.
So these won't get paid till the next cycle, okay, just finish this one, so.
So we have any minutes? No business, you have a bill warrant?
We have a bill warrant, too. We have a bill warrant, number fourteen forty-six, for eighty-seven thousand, two hundred thousand and six cents.
Does that have a motion to sign?
I make a motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I borrow your pen? If you wanna sign it in red.
Ed, can Ramon stay on on the conservation commission?
I believe he can. I think he's already called to verify that.
Okay.
No PCFs, no PRFs, we have a one-day beer and wine permit, permit for Conant Park, Patricia La Magdalena on June first, from four till dark. And the check, and the fire, and the police has been made aware of this, and everyone is okay.
I make a motion to sign the one-day liquor license.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we also have, we need to have a revote on an alcohol license that was signed for a party at Conant Park on May fourth. We had a special meeting on May second for the purpose of addressing this, however, due to miscommunication, a physical quorum wasn't present, so a misconception by the board led to the permit being signed, and we need to correct that. So if I could have a motion to-
I make a motion to-
Yeah, you weren't there.
Reauthorize the Tyler Godwin, okay?
You weren't there. So, I make a motion to approve the signing of the liquor license that has already gone by and passed.
So I just wanted to go through this, this was my mistake. I had forgotten about the meeting, and I had to go to Boston, and so we did the vote, where I called in on the phone, thinking that would be okay, because I can't lose that, meetings all the time in the company, but it turns out it wasn't the appropriate thing to do, and I apologize to the town for that. So it was actually a meeting that did not have a quorum, so therefore, any and all votes didn't really occur, so you never had a meeting. So at this point, I would make a motion to approve it, because there was no meeting before, there was never a quorum. So I make a motion to approve that liquor license. Second. No, there was no meeting.
Oh.
There was no meeting, there was no quorum. Because we didn't have three people in the room, so there was actually no, no quorum, no meeting.
So we're justifying this today.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye. And on that note, Ms. Quirkerson, I would like to change the policy, because what I found out is that, I actually got a phone call from a friend, who's a resident in Town Halling, and wanted us to approve a liquor license as well for his daughter's birthday party that Sunday, and I think there was a miscommunication between the parks commissioner over misunderstanding that the people that were renting Conant Park thought he was just gonna pick up a license, and that it was not based around the, the schedule of the select board. So moving forward to remedy this situation, I would pass off any power to give the licenses actually to the, the town administrator, so it can be done more efficiently.
For one-day licenses?
For liquor license, for Conant Park.
Okay, for one-day liquor license?
One-day liquor license for Conant Park. Just to make it easier for the citizens to enjoy their park, and I just felt really bad, and a friend who wanted to, and for his kid's birthday, have a party there, so-
I have no problem with that, it is a good motion, but I don't want us, we have to physically sign them with flex and futures, I don't know.
Well, it's not on the agenda to address it in the sense to take a vote, I'm just recommending perhaps it's-
Isn't that how it always goes, though? Like, we haven't had this issue until, right now, don't they get their, their stuff, they sign their papers and all of this through you?
No, well, actually, we ended up voting on it, is what we ended up doing, because there were some issues in the beginning, back at the old Town Hall, so we just wanted to make sure, because there wasn't always somebody in the office, so we were sort of in our lap. Now that we have somebody in the office here, the town administrator, and I think we can sort of delegate some of that responsibility. And the ZBA is sort of a delegation of our responsibility, and is a commission for that ZBA committee, so I think we can delegate some of this for the one-day license. I think it's the appropriate thing to do.
As long as we can research and make sure we do the right thing.
Yeah, so I, I, I don't know if we should take a vote on it tonight, because it sounds like an agenda.
We'll take a vote on it once we find out the information.
Yeah, I would, and maybe put it on the agenda if you could, Heather, for further discussion.
We have no contracts. We have a special legislation request pursuant to Article Two, Section Eight, Paragraph One, Clause Two of the amendments to the Constitution to ratify the results of the town's May fifth, two thousand and fourteen annual election. So on the day of our annual election, it was discovered by the clerk's office and the town administrator that the town, that the administrative error had occurred, and the warrant of the town election wasn't properly posted. So the clerk contacted the state elections division, and was advised to have the town contact our state rep and move forward with special legislation to proceed as normal. We now have special legislation, and it will, it was drafted in assistance to town council and our state rep, Peter Colcott, and once this is signed, it will be mailed, it will be mailed certified mail to the state house and presented to Congress via the governor. Did anybody see this yet?
It will get sent to the county.
Did you all have a chance to read it?
Yeah, we sort of went through this before, so, I forget which year it was.
Two thousand and seven, I believe.
So this has happened before, and I think after this is said and done, I think we need to sit down and make sure that there's a protocol in place. I think there was already a corrective action done back then, that we wanted to make sure it didn't happen again. Obviously, with Heather coming on board as new individual, the maintenance and miscommunication and whatnot, so that going forward, we'll make sure that there is no more miscommunication. But I would, I would, you know, do we have to take a vote on anything today?
Take a vote to sign that, yep.
So I make a motion to proceed with getting that special legislation to get approved.
Any other discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you just need this last, the second, this last page signed?
Yes.
I didn't sign that, because I didn't see where to sign it, that's what I was waiting for.
Right above. Right above the signature. It says board of selectmen down below, and move up to your side. Right above that signature, yeah, whatever signature that is.
Do we need everyone to sign this?
Sure.
Heather, we haven't posted the building inspector's position yet, right?
We have.
Yeah.
It's been posted, we've already received several job applications, and it's posted, we'll be posted until, oh, yeah.
That's why I'm still hungry.
But we, oh, we'll discuss it when we get this-
And you have to sign this one.
So this old harvest and a road?
I think it's gonna be a new road.
I think that is not in the street yet, I think it's the name of the new, it's Roadway.
Because we already voted to take-
Stop going there.
We already voted to take lots A, B, and C out of the Strong Road, we already voted for that.
Yeah.
So that's part of, again, A, B, and C, but we already did that, so-
Are you confusing it with Cook Road?
No, it says right here, Strong Road.
So we already, we already took out lots A, B, and C on East Lee's side of Strong Road, assessor's map, twenty-nine parcels, fifty-two and fifty-three.
Those were the front of lots.
Right, we did that by the board April first, two thousand and fourteen, so what they're asking us to do tonight?
What's the difference between the two? That's the question.
And we asked to take out a sixty-one A? And you take out a sixty-one A last night?
And this one here is, it's lots A, B, and C of Strong Road, recorded plan, map twenty and lots fifty-two and fifty-three, under said chapter sixty-one, doesn't say sixty-nine or sixty-one A. Maybe just to repeat.
Well, we, we have two things for tonight, one is for, we have to re-sign the one we already did, and that is the lots A, B, and C on the East Lee's side of Strong Road, assessor's map twenty-nine, parcels fifty-two and fifty-three.
Why do we have to re-sign it?
Why do we have to re-sign it?
We have to, we were asked to re-sign it by the assessor's office, because apparently the information was recorded correctly. I'm gonna notice to me, in the past, the assessor's office used to prepare these forms, but I was not aware of that, so last time I prepared it-
Okay.
-from the drafts we had, and omitted some information from earlier knowledge.
All right, so we just need to-
So you just need a vote to re-sign these papers?
So I make a motion to re-sign what we already signed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Then there's another sixty-one A property, Old Harvest Road, lots one through thirteen, and open space area, and this is a request for, for refusal. And so that must be the road that they're gonna build, that's the right parallel to?
I'll be waiting for conservation to add it to the front end or do it?
I have not heard back from Charlie on this, this one. Marla?
However, I am here, I can speak to that. This vote, like, our others was not an overwhelming majority, three people voted to waive, two people did not, and the other two were not there. I am one of the people who voted to waive, not because I do not think that that property adjacent to the property could be an asset to the town in extension of the fields or community gardens or whatever open space value, but with the realization that since the property is no longer owned by the farm family as and in fact has been turned into a subdivision plan approved by the planning board, I don't believe there's any possibility the conservation commission could come up with money. So that's why I made the third vote, under pain, to recommend to waive. Of course, the vote is yours, but we did vote.
So there was an official vote by conservation commission to waive any rights?
We did. There was three saying yes to recommend that you waive it, or basically saying-
But the official vote?
Was, I am the secretary of the conservation commission, I keep the notes, the vote was three yes, one no, one abstaining, and two people were not there.
But the, the overall, you say is they voted yes?
Yes, to recommend to you that you can waive.
Okay, that's, that's, because it may be a certain vote, but the, the commission has voted not to exercise their right.
Yes, we have, but I was letting you know that I was one of the three, so I just did that unhappily, but yes, we did waive, we recommend to waive.
Marla, can I ask a question? Because when I was evaluating these subdivisions, I was, I was, there was a parcel in the back, that one's gonna end up in the town's hands, is this the parcel?
This is the new road.
Okay, but I'm talking about in the back, there's a connection between the park and that, that we're gonna leave open space.
On reading the letter from the attorney, that open space was part of it, it said the, the new road and that open space, it said lots one through thirteen plus open space. Um, reading the letter from the attorney, that open space was part of it, it said the, the new road and that open space, it said lots one through thirteen, plus open space.
It's an easement, so there's a, there's a water line easement through there too, tying into it.
It included the whole farm, the whole farm.
Okay.
Yes.
I think that's, they're gonna...
So the town's gonna get a part of that anyway.
Yeah, so any discussion, really, that's really planning board stuff, but it's good to hear, but I, I think our vote is based on whether or not we're gonna follow conservations, correct? Or do we gonna vote to see if we can get funds to preserve this as open space, although we don't have any of that.
I don't think we're gonna do that anymore.
So, I...
I make a motion to, um, um, take sixty-one A, I mean, take that property at sixty-one A.
Is it sixty-one A or sixty-one?
Sixty-one A. Sixty-one A in my paper.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dave, on sixty-one A, is, 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 is in a connotation, right, of sixty-one B, it has a piece of property to choose from, recreational, athletic, and...
Marla, you okay with that, that fits what you guys were saying? I know it's har-, it's hard.
Um, no, I'm not okay with it, but it is consistent with the reality. Had it come to us directly from the farm family...
It would've been different.
I would have done something.
They wanted a million dollars for that, we talked to them, Ed, you know, Debbie Blanchard talked to them, they wanted a million dollars for that property, and the town didn't have the money.
I can assure you, it is not within the conservation commission's budget.
Yeah, but on a positive note, we got Wolf Hill, right, we got that conservation area, a few other places in town, I mean, we are still preserving land in town, which is nice.
Um, there's still lots of...
Always, always, and I think we talked about a, a...
That's such a low number, David.
But it's a start, it's a start, it's a realistic start.
We are working on it, but it gives us pain to, um, let the farms go.
It is, it's very painful. I, you know, I lived up, you know, west of Boston, the four ninety-five, and I saw a whole town's apple orchards torn up, and just housing tracts put in. Through Westford and Harvard, Harvard and Pepperell and Littleton, and that, you know, there was just no money to do that, and it's just part of it. But, if we can focus on some of the key pieces of property, I think that's, it's giving us a chance to preserve some land.
We are working on it.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so, the next action is, um, Park Place as it pertains to Safe Roots to School, and Randall can't be here with us tonight, but the one question we need to find out was, was Park Place accepted as a town road?
Yes, sir.
It was, so we can give Randall that information and then ask him to come back and, uh, how about it?
It should be a little time today, we've done a top meeting within the last ten years.
Um, the personal policy procedure bylaw review, there's a public hearing for, for proposed changes to the bylaws this Thursday at six o'clock in the meeting room upstairs. And I know that, um, PBB's worked really hard to make lots of changes and make that bylaw kind of fit where we are now as a town. Um, so if anybody wants to see where we're at with that, it would be Thursday at six o'clock. We have annual reappointments, and the following people are, um, being reappointed for various positions, is it, do I have to read all of these?
I told them I would go on to the election.
I left the email.
No, I have it right here. So, is it normal that I would sit, do I read all of these out loud, is that what happens?
No, I'll take them all.
Well, it, you could, this can be entered into the minutes, and you would just request, and it's already on the agenda, so it is...
But I don't have to read them all.
No, you don't have to read them all, but just go, I would go through them quickly and see if there's anybody that is no longer, like, Ed, you still emergency me?
No, but I, I have the...
There's adjustments on that one.
And I have the updated list right here, so...
Okay.
Maybe I'll just read them, and you can tell.
Go ahead.
I'll go fast. Richard Lexak, the building inspector, that's, um, expiring on the thirtieth of June, there's two that expire this year, so, um, Rich Lexak's on June thirtieth, and Michael Sacco on December thirty-first. Then...
Michael Sacco's on the ZDA.
Yes, oh, you need to know that too, sorry. Um, then we have the building inspector alternate, the electrical inspector, the FRTA delegate, gas and plumbing inspector, and his alternate, do you need to know all these names, or I just keep going? David?
I, is there any changes from this list?
There, there are probably a few changes or corrections from it, it would probably just be beneficial just to read the name and the place.
The ones that Liz is reading right now are all one-year appointments.
Okay.
Okay, so we have Hank Barton to the PBPC, Eric Loyco, police officer, Scott Gove, police officer, Ryan Holmes, police officer, David Neal, police officer, David Latour, police officer, Jeff Silva, police officer, Michael Goyet, police officer, Kelly Bannister, police officer, Jason Desklos, police officer, Zachary Bouset, police officer, Stephen Jeffers, police officer, Philip Lanyar, police officer, Kevin Nichols, police officer, Robert St. Martin, police officer, Scott Schuster, police officer, Mark Grober, police officer, Ian Illingsworth, police officer, and Richard Ferry, Veterans Grave Officer, and Gerald Paquette, Veteran Service Agent.
Did you mention, um, Mark Grober?
Yes. The following are three-year terms, Kate Miller Carl to the Agricultural Commission, Matt Christie to Conservation Commission, Marla Hank, Conservation Commission, Charlie Lee McDonald to Conservation Commission, Elaine Miller to Cultural Council, Margaret Larson, Cultural Council, Kurt Bojolay, Energy Committee, Doric Dodds, Historical Commission, Richard Ferry, Historical Commission, Christina Madsen, Historical Commission, Don Abel, Recreational Needs Committee, Kim Bischoff, Recreational Needs Committee, I think that's supposed to be Jim, not Kim.
Jim.
Yeah. Brian Phillips, Recreational Needs Committee, Jeff Swanson, Recreational Needs Committee, Neil De Cohen to the Zoning Board of Appeals. That's it.
Make a motion to postpone.
All in favor?
Aye.
And, open tag for the public?
Oh, with Donna go. Yeah, she had one thing to say. So when Donna's gone, or before she's here, do you want me to give my town administrator a report?
Have time to do it that quickly?
Yeah, I don't have very much to add, um, most of my time has been spent working on the budget and Prop two and a half materials. We have an informational session tomorrow at six-thirty at the Norris School Cafeteria, we were relocated, the school committee bumped us. So we are now in the school cafeteria at six-thirty, uh, information, we'll be there to answer questions, provide information, at least I will be there, Liz, you'll be there as well?
I'll be there.
Liz will be there, and we'll see who else we can have with us. Just tomorrow, six-thirty, for questions on the budget and Prop two and a half, we're just trying to get the information out there, if anyone has questions, we're there to provide it. That's, that's pretty much it on our end, um, we've been working with Finance Committee, we'll have more updates next week on that piece of information, but Donna has some really good news, so I don't wanna...
Hi, Donna.
So this afternoon, the movies contacted us, and our bond rating has been restored to what it was, and, um...
So it's back to whatever it was when we...
It was A one, so it's back to the same that it was, um, so hopefully going forward, we can have our fastest on timing, and, you know...
This was just a, a problem of timing.
It was a different timing issue. Good, so, anyway.
You're done, I know you worked on it, yeah. Strong work, thank you. I do, I know you've worked on it.
We have the OPEB thing done, that was fairly soon, we didn't go back to it until that was done, so, anyway, any good news?
So is that what the state's gonna do, is they're gonna use our bond ratings, or town's bond ratings to get the OPEB done? Is that how it's gonna be?
No, it's just, um, you know, the movies looks at any negative, anything negative that comes out of the audit, when they look at whether, uh, what they're gonna give for a bond rating. And so, because the OPEB hadn't been done, and it should've been done years ago, you know, that was, that was something that our financial advisor said, you know, we need to go back to movies and ask for it back until you get that done, you know, so...
And it's a big, the OPEB is a big liability for us, if we don't, you know, if we don't reserve for it, right, so, and there's a few things that, that I need to do going forward to make us gas be fifty-four compliant, which is fixed assets, um, and depreciation, which, that's one of the things that can increase our property, so that's something that I need to work with the others to find out how we can manage to get that accomplished, to increase our bond rating.
We had like a, an hour-plus telephone conference with movies and, um, last week, and, you know, they said that if we have a more solid, you know, management plan in place, and we can get this gas be, you know, this fixed asset thing done, and, you know, that, moving forward, we could apply to have our rating increased, to, you know, to a better rate.
In regards to our audit, are we, are we complete, are we almost complete?
Well, we have a few things that, um, I need to send to Tania, and I was actually gonna contact her to see what else she has that, um, really, um, to send her whatever her outstanding list is, so...
So...
And she was on vacation last week, so...
We're on, we're on track.
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you, it was good news.
So we just go over the calendar, Heather talked about the informational meeting.
I have two more things.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm a squad, um, well, this is an important one, the warrant has been posted for the annual town meeting. I dropped it off last Thursday at the police station, I do not, however, I have called and counted the police station, um, and I do have a re-, my return copy signed by the constable, and apparently he posted the return, um, service on the, in the, under the clerk's store. She received the return and service, so we have that posted up front, so we are all set. And the annual town report has finally been sent to the printers, next year I'd like to do it much earlier, like in January.
Fair enough.
Liz, did you already get the permission?
So let's move on to the calendar. So we have, um, the meeting tomorrow night, a proposition, um, informational meeting at six-thirty in the Norris Cafeteria, if anybody is interested in coming and learning more about how this is going to affect your life and your children in school, um, May fourteenth at six-thirty. The annual town meeting is next Tuesday at seven o'clock in the Norris Cafeteria, and, um, this says that we need to meet early.
Yes, we're gonna have to meet prior to that, at, you know, at least six-thirty, it doesn't matter to me what time, but we have to meet at least for a few minutes, just simply to vote on the payroll.
So perhaps we should meet at six-thirty, the Board of Selectmen, next Tuesday, same time in the Norris Cafeteria. Right, so six-thirty, in the Norris Cafeteria.
We're gonna meet in the library.
And Liz, Thursday night at Norris in the library, we're having the...
I'm going, that's next. Um, so Thursday night at six-thirty in the Norris Library, is that what you said, Norris Library is the Citizen Emergency Management Assistance Program. You wanna talk about that?
Yes, we're gonna have, um, the police chief, the fire chief, and our new superintendent, um, of the highway department, and, um, Sergeant Illingsworth is gonna be there, we're gonna talk about the citizens', uh, citizens' management program. And, um, it should be very interesting, and it's six, six-thirty, and I'd love to have everybody come.
And do you wanna talk about the Memorial Day Parade, Monday, May twenty-sixth?
May twenty-sixth, we're having a, a wonderful parade, and...
Where all the members of the select board are marching, so they'll have to park their boats and come home.
Yeah, that's right, and, um, we're really excited because we hear, um, Major Scott Rice is gonna be there, and he's gonna speak, and, um, we're gonna have a lot of, uh, students there marching, and it's gonna be a lot of fun.
Great.
Is it, is it any chat, is that supposed to be somebody's last reminder?
Nope.
Cars and, you know, we said...
Look, I could get you a wagon. Anything I'm missing? I would take a motion to adjourn, look at tires!
I'm adjourned.
All in favor?